And anybody hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, I can hear you, Kwan.
Well, you got you.
Hello?
Okay. I have us live on YouTube. We are recording. We're fine to get started in Mr. Chair whenever you would like.
Hey, sounds good. And Kwan, just to be sure, we we can hear you, Kwan. I don't know if you can hear us. But let's get started. We'll see if. He's he's tuning out. Okay, maybe he'll join us back again. So. Welcome whoever's with us. Virtually to our planning commission tonight. My name's Josh Sundloff. I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission. We'll start with the first item on the agenda, which is typically approval of minutes, but we're going to start with the election of Vice Chair, which gets to fill my seat whenever I'm absent, which hopefully won't be too much, but in any event. Let's go to that agenda item. I think what we will do is entertain any nominations, or if anyone wants to throw their hat in the ring, then we can take nominations after that. Or if anyone has any questions about the position and what you do.
So do you want to take nominations? Or are we going to do it by throw your hat in the ring?
Why don't we hear if there's anyone who who wants to do it? I mean, I'll just use election of the Chair as a as a example. Of course, I wasn't here, but I don't know how that went down. I know how it's gone down before, and that is some people might say, I don't mind doing it. I'll do it if you'd like me to, and we have a discussion. I've also seen nominations. So if anyone's willing to do it, you can say now, or we can take nominations. Whoever wants to speak up. And then, in any event, we'll we'll have to, even if someone throws their hat in the ring, we'll have to have a formal nomination and a second, and then a vote on it. So.
Okay, it's Kwan. I would like to throw my hat in the ring.
I'll second that.
I would nominate Kwan then as the Vice Chair.
Yep.
Abby, are you interested?
Um, yeah, I guess. But if 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 Kwan is preferable, I'm perfectly fine with that. I'm not going to have any bad blood.
No bad blood.
I I I know we're all we're all pretty. What's the word? Yeah, polite and friendly. And I think regardless of how it shakes out, that'll still stay the same. Maybe, and I honestly don't know the answer to this. Kwan or Abby, I don't know who's been on longest. And and in tradition, we don't have to stay with tradition, but in tradition, we've done for the Chair, whoever's been on there the longest somewhat by default. We don't, again, we don't have to stay with that. But that might help break a tie. It's just up to the commission. Or or you can explain, I suppose, you know, why you want to do it, or what, whatever.
So does somebody want to nominate Abby? Abby, would you like to be nominated?
Um, yeah, but Kwan, I don't want to take your your thing. Would we nominate both? And then, I mean, how does that work?
Yeah, we would. Chair, you want to explain that?
Yeah, I mean, we would. Technically, I guess. We've we've had us. I I would hear. I guess the way I would interpret it so far is we've had a nomination and a second. And if I understand the rules that we somewhat try to follow, we would have a vote on that already, I guess. Or. Yeah, I mean, the more I think out loud here, that's probably what what we should do. Although it was kind of an informal nomination and and second. So, I mean, I I honestly, maybe I'll ask Lyle quickly. I don't know the true rules. If we have a if we have a nomination and a second, we.
I think what we're getting to, Mr. Chair, would be probably the appropriate order. So there's been a motion by Commissioner Doxey, a second for Summer Corn. You can have discussion of that motion. It sounds like there's another interested party. So with the group knowing that, you can simply vote on the nomination of Kwan to be Vice Chair. And if others are interested in Commissioner Hunt maybe doing that instead, then you can say nay to that vote, and then somebody can make another motion for her instead. So knowing there's that interest out there, I think you just vote on Commissioner Glenn's consideration for that. That's my two cents.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think. I think, and maybe, I don't know if this helps the rest of the commissioners. It probably would help me a little bit, I guess, to just follow tradition. Who's been on longer, Kwan or Abby? I honestly don't know the answer.
Kwan's been on longer.
Okay.
I think I think what you could do, too, is you could take both nominations, and then we could vote. And whoever gets the most votes becomes the Vice Chair. With seven of us, it shouldn't come out as a tie unless somebody abstains. And a way we could do that over Zoom, I guess. Lyle, you can see when people use the raise your hand feature, right? We could vote that way.
Can you? Can we? Can we? I guess we vote silently. Is that what you're saying, Will?
Yeah, that's what I'm because normally you'd probably want to do this like by a, you know, secret ballot or write it down on a piece of paper. And this I hear on Zoom, I guess we could do that by using the raise raise hand function.
I think everyone can see when you raise your hand, but could we send over Zoom? Can't you send a private a private message in the in the chat, or is that function not?
I think that function's turned off. We can have a poll option here.
Oh, really?
Never used it before, so. That may be an option.
I mean, if we can do the poll, let's do that.
This clarification, this is for would be for till July, correct? Because our bylaws say that we have to nominate new people again in July.
Right, correct.
That's correct.
So here's what I what I think we should do. Let's let's if Lyle, we can do this. Let's. There's been a nomination or a motion for Kwan and a second. Let's have a poll or a private vote on that nomination and see where that shakes out.
Hey, I'm seeing if I can get that private quiet vote. Okay, so here comes the question. I'm going to launch the poll.
Okay. Okay.
And I don't know how this is going to respond coming in. Honestly, I think it'll just show them, but it's not going to say who did it.
So it says. It says panelists cannot vote. Is that us, or is that the the public?
Oh, no. Well, you're a panelist, so if it doesn't let you vote, then this may not be a function. So the public weighed in, so we won't let them take that. I'll end this.
What if? What if we sent emails quickly? Can we do that? I mean, I don't know. This is getting this is getting into COVID creativity here.
We could, if you would like to send myself an email, we could count that way. That would be fun.
Does everybody? Does that work for everybody?
And all you're looking.
That works for me.
So just, I guess. Yes or no? On on the motion for Kwan?
So just the l gibson@casevillecity.com, if you'll just email over yes or no regarding the nomination for Commissioner Guyan for Vice Chair.
Okay.
I just emailed you.
Over a proper spam filter. As long as you promise not to contest the polling election results. Still waiting for a few more.
You still have the votes, though. We could come and audit the results.
I do. I have the copy of the record, so it shouldn't take more than seven seconds to do that.
I think we should demand a recount.
So I have at least four i-votes for the nomination of Commissioner Guyan. Two, three, four.
Okay.
You want to get an exact?
If it's a, yeah, if it's a majority, it doesn't matter. So so Kwan, you are elected as Vice Chair, and that will go through, I guess, July, it sounds like, Lyle? And is that is that my term as well?
Uh, yeah. You've missed a few meetings, so you've got to go on longer.
Okay.
So I believe what the bylaws state is the first meeting in July. Every year, we elect new Chair and Vice Chair, so.
Yeah, okay. Well, okay, thank you. Let's go to the second item on the agenda, which is opening and approval of the minutes from November 12th, 2020 meeting. Anyone have any comments, questions, or or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's. Well, I suppose we can just all vote in unison, all in favor. Say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Item number three is the final plat approval for the Romney Flat Lot Subdivision at 717 East 100 South for Jenny Romney, and I believe we had seen this before. It's gone through to the council and and back to us for final plat, so Lyle, I'll give you the floor.
Thank you. Yeah, so the Chair is incorrect, and recently the Planning Commission saw this proposal. Back when I was in front of the Planning Commission, it had a slightly different configuration, so I'll just remind you briefly of that with the property here on the far east edge of 100 South Street. And there's an existing home against 100 South that will remain. It'll be modified as part of this in order to get the correct distances and separation required. And then behind that to the north, the proposal would be to create two new lots. Originally, when it came before the Planning Commission, the lots, you kind of turned to the east to get to the back lot. There were a lot of concern and comments from the neighbors. So before they went to the city council, they modified that to look like this concept. A number of lots still meet the distance and size requirements. And ultimately, what this did was just orient everything straight back. It's a more standard looking flat lot. The final plat here is consistent with that. Same number of lots, they meet the specs and requirements of the R18 in the PRUD zoning district, which was approved by the city council. And with that, staff is ready to recommend approval of the final plat.
Okay, thank you. And then just remind us at this stage. It's large. It's I mean, it's an it's a is it an administrative decision on our end, so we have not much discretion here?
That's accurate. So is it consistent with the preliminary plat? And does it meet the bounds and expectation that were approved under that process? And where meets the minimum lot size frontage, there were no unique or special circumstances put in place through the PRUD zoning process. We believe it meets those minimum requirements, no expectations, and therefore is ready to go.
Okay. Any questions or discussion from the commission?
Lyle, for this, do we need to do any kind of approval now so that we don't have to see it back here again for another plat?
No, this is the final plat, so you guys are the last group to see it at this stage, and we simply work with them to if we connect utilities in this case to the lots and build homes. So this will be the last step from any public process.
And if there's no if there's any discussion or questions, let's have those, or we can hear a motion as well if you're ready for that.
I'm happy to make a motion. I move to approve the final plat for the Romney Double Flag Lot subdivision located at 717 East 100 South, as recommended by staff.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's start the voting with Toby. And I don't know how the orientation of the screen. Maybe I'll call it this way. This is how I see it on my screen. Toby, Abby, Jared, Wilf, Kwan, Steve.
Aye.
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 And I vote aye. Okay. Next item is a similar item, a final plat approval for the Pottawatomie Estates subdivision Phase One, which we have also seen previously. Lyle?
And I don't know if I'm saying it right either, Chair. I know the applicant is on the meeting here with us this evening, so they can correct us there, but.
Okay.
Part of what Pottawatomie Estates subdivision is part of the Harvey Family property, just on the south end of 200 North. When the Planning Commission saw this a while back, it looked like this. They were looking at the big master plan for maybe what might happen with the entire property. And the commission was very much on board with some of the big concept ideas with this. There was a lot of discussion on the street connectivity. But the number of units and some of the layout lot sizes were in favor. However, the commission did recommend denial based on street connectivity. When it went to council, the council said ultimately, no, they did not think that the street needed to go through, and so approved it in this configuration. The just only these standard lots here that we're looking at in this phase one, so the other smaller lots or anything to the west and up against 200 have still yet to be approved for any rezon or preliminary. So you just kind of got to pick out Phase One out of this. And what the council said at the time with that is you don't need to push the street through, but they wanted to assure that the street would eventually push north through to 200 North Street, as is shown on this. But to make sure that happened, they required the applicant to dedicate that with the Phase One. And so as you look at the plat proposed here before you, you can see very consistent with that. We have these lots. It's an R110 designation. And they're all standard lots. Most of them well exceed that minimum size, but that zone was selected primarily for the slot 110, which is about 11,000 square feet in size, so it also exceeds the 10,000. And the street dedication goes all the way up to the neighboring property line. The conversation with the council also, knowing that Lot 108 here on the top left corner was anticipated to be used at least in the short term, or, you know, during this phase, probably for continued use of their agriculture. And so the asphalt improvements will actually stop at the top of this cul-de-sac. And all the utilities run to the far north end all the way to the property line. The dedication goes to the property line, but that just allows for some back and forth use for some courses and ag in the meantime, until the next phases come in place when that gets polished up. So we feel with staff and working on this with the Harvey family, that that seemed to me, the conversation that was had with the council accomplished the things that they asked for. That's consistent with preliminary plat in the zone that's in place. And with the engineering also, it's been looked over. Staff's ready to recommend approval of the final plat for this subdivision. Not as interesting, but here's just the second page of the plat. It's one of those with enough on it that it's got just curve data and survey detail, but technically, it's part of what gets recorded. So just to show you that second page. But that's probably what you're interested in. So with that, we'll pass along that recommendation. And again, I believe both Nephi and Malcolm Harvey are available if there are questions the applicant.
Okay, thank you, Lyle. Any questions or discussion amongst the commission or for the applicant in terms of discretion? It's just like our last one. We don't have a whole lot here, but open it up to the commission. Or we can hear a motion as well.
I'll make a motion then. I'll make a motion to approve the final plat for Pottawatomie Estates Phase One subdivision consisting of 4.78 acres of property at approximately 1773 West 200 North as as currently conditioned by staff.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. If we can remember our order, let's start with Abby and and vote. I think it was Jared, then Wilf, Kwan, and Toby.
Go, Kwan.
Oh, aye.
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 Aye. Okay. That is the main portion of our agenda. We do have another item to discuss, but we'll first have a call to the public. I think we have three members of the public here with us, it appears. If anyone from the public would like to make a comment, I think, Lyle, do they just raise their hand and you'll give them a moment? You're on mute, Lyle.
Thank you. So probably most who are on have participated with us in this format before, but that raise hand button usually is the bottom middle of your screen. We'll be able to see that you're interested in speaking, and we'll give you the permission to do so.
And Lyle, if we don't see anyone, I guess going once, twice.
So far, no interest, and I think there everybody's happy.
Okay, let's move on then. And our last item is reports, correspondence, and calendar. I think we want to have a spend a little bit of time actually talking about the status of the general plan and and kind of some next steps with maybe some input tonight from the commission. So, Lyle, you want to introduce that?
Yes, so I'm going to stall just a little bit. And while I get everything up, our consultant, Sam Taylor, is planning on joining us about 7:30. Excited that with the Vice Chair election that we'd easily hit that with the other business. So let me get this ready. And and just as a reminder, we've started this several months ago. Process is the commission's all aware. We've had an initial public outreach that kind of helped us with the scoping and getting some comments. We've done all of it during this pandemic, and so it's been as far as input and outreach all online. And anyway, had the participation with that. That informed the questions, the process, and what came with this next set. And that had was the most recent survey that was open essentially through the month of November. And anyway, we closed it on November 30th, let a few more comments trickle in. And I think with good input we had on the first phase, we we were a little bit underwhelmed, frankly, on what came in with the second phase as far as the amount of comment. But I think there's some interesting things we'll glean from it. So I do see that Sam Taylor, I think, so Landmark Design is now one of our participants is available online. They've taken data and input. I'll turn it over here to Sam and allow you to speak and in fact, I'm put you on. Sam, I assume that's you as a panelist here. That'll allow me to give you some permissions. If you'd like, I can pull up your data, or do you prefer to do that? We can give you permission so that you can share and go through it.
I I can share it if that's all right.
Does it allow you to share a screen, or do I need to change your permissions, I think?
It looks like you've disabled my screen sharing, yeah, so.
So I think we'll promote you again. It's two promotions in five minutes. You're doing pretty good. See if that will allow you to share a screen, and and then we'll let you speak. And I just gave them a very brief reminder kind of where we've come from and how we get to this this point of getting this data. So we're pleased to see what's on here, and I'll be quiet at that.
Perfect. Thank you for the intro, Lyle. And thank you all for having us on tonight, you know, at Lincoln Zeit meeting, but hopefully, this is meaningful and we're hoping to get your your some of your direction as we're moving forward. As Lyle mentioned, you know, the participation is kind of an interesting going through this process. We still feel like there's really good feedback here. Enough to perhaps take it to the next step. But perhaps we need to go back to the public for another round before we move on with the draft. So but I'll I'll go through just outcomes of what we came away with for that public workshop tonight. So we had the workshop open from November 10th to 30th. Was the posted dates, but we let the surveys open until December 4th, so give a few more days for things to trickle in. We had over more than 600 visits to the site during that time. So that's actually really positive. We had a lot of people visit. But the number that actually left responses, you know, we had 87 complete the Guiding Principal Survey and 69 complete the scenario questionnaire. So no, it's it's not uncommon. You know, when we go through these processes for other cities and and when we've done, you know, in-person public workshops, you know, the number of people that show up to the meeting aren't necessarily doesn't necessarily correlate with the number of the response. We expect a dip. I think we'd hope to get a few more responses than this, but what we do have is is good feedback, so.
Do you hate us a quick question? Do you know how many people that start started it but abandoned, like they didn't complete the survey?
So I think it's telling between the two numbers, kind of how where it fell. So the Guiding Principal Survey was the first survey exercise that was presented. So we got 87 respondents there, and then it dips off to 69 for the second survey portions. Everyone that attempted those portions finished them. You know, no one ever, you know, jettisoned after answering a question or two. But it does, it does appear that we, you know, lost 18 people that probably got burnt out after the first survey, so. One of the questions that we asked within the scenario questionnaire was which quadrant to the city do you live in? That was something that had been requested by one of the council members to understand where we're hearing the voices from. I think it's actually good that we did that. I think it's actually good that we did that. Um you can see kind of what we're assuming are the quadrants of K'sville roughly. There's probably some overlap between the north and south areas there. Um but that's it's generally the areas that we're looking at as we analyze this data. Um to understand, you know, how it might correlate with issues in each area. So there were three scenarios that we put out there. I don't, hopefully you've all had a chance to see these before. I I won't go into him in too much detail, but. The first, you know, looks at really just the downtown core as an area of change. We throughout all of these, we really wanted to just. Preserve single-family neighborhoods as they are. Uh there's so much uh kickback from developing anything of higher density. Out in, you know, these single-family areas, so we're just kind of assuming, you know, let's let that be. Um and focus on areas that, you know, make sense as activity centers. Um so the first really looked at downtown, uh is this kind of redevelopment sort of area. Um really focusing on North Main Street more than anything. But you can you can see the the breakdown of what we had proposed with that scenario there. Uh scenario B took some of that uh redevelopment and change across the freeway to the business districts on the west side of I fifteen. Um and it kind of decreased a little bit of the intensity off of the the downtown. Uh to kind of make more of a spread uh downtown, expanded downtown core. And then the third reduces that a little bit further and spreads it even further out into some neighborhood centers is the concept there. There's not honestly, not a lot of open land left in K'sville. And particularly not along, you know, corridors that um would support activity centers, so. Pretty much, you know, down at Shepherd Lane and and along two hundred north, there's some pockets, but. The the opportunities for that are limited, but that was the the third concept that we put out there. See if, you know, people are interested in having these little neighborhood centers in their in their neighborhoods. Uh taken overall, uh scenario C poked out ahead a little bit. Um but when we actually asked a follow-up question, why do you, why did you choose the scenario you liked most? Uh there's actually overlap between, you know, each of the scenarios, and there's not necessarily a clear leader. So. Uh here is a pretty pretty good summary of what all the comments were. Um those that chose scenario A liked it for the least perceived amount of change to town. Um keeping the small-town feel essentially. Uh they liked how centralized businesses and services brought renewal to the downtown, preserve single-family neighborhoods. And uh. Their perception was that it would create less traffic throughout the city. Scenario B, those that voted for that, once again, like the centralization of everything, but liked being able to have some of the services available on the west side. They liked the concept of relieving some of the pressure off of downtown, so it didn't have to become this dense urban area. Once again, they're interested in it for preserving single-family neighborhoods, keeping that, you know, dense. Uh multifamily residential and the commercial out of single-family areas. And others really liked that it just balanced the east and the west sides. Both the activity and the traffic. Those that voted for scenario C, uh we're all about just it was all about the concept of distribution, distribute the activity, distribute the traffic. Provide some diversity throughout the city. The neighborhood centers was appealing to them because it created walkability. And they really liked the idea of these little unique neighborhood centers where you could go and get a bite to eat or go to a yoga studio or something. So uh you can see some, you know, direct quotes and I I think Lyle, have you provided the the raw data to everybody?
I have not yet, so.
Okay.
And I'm happy to distribute it after. I didn't know before or after. I didn't want Toby to, you know, be reading it while you're trying to predict. I just want the commissioner bearers.
I appreciate that.
I I can send it right now if everybody would like, so you know you received it and but you are.
So, yeah, we 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 we're happy to share the raw data with you and all the the comments. Um you know, I think there's a lot of good stuff there. I it's it, I don't think you're gonna glean too much more than what we've summarized in this presentation, but it is fun to see what people say specifically. And, you know, these quotes here just kind of sum up. Uh people's feelings about it, you know, um centralization is a theme here, the balance between options. Uh you know, diversity of options and locations, you know, it's uh that that's really. A a comment, those are common themes that we saw throughout the comments for these scenarios, so. Uh there's definitely pieces of this that were common threads throughout, and I think those are the things that we're gonna be focusing on moving forward. Trying to arrive at a preferred alternative. Um and what's interesting is that all three scenarios had people that felt that they kept the small-town feel, so. For whatever reasons, they they had uh that that I think. This this con- concept of preserving who you are, your identity is a really important part of uh why your citizens live there. And um so I think that's at the forefront of their minds as they're making these decisions, making these comments. We went ahead and broke it down by quadrant as well, examining this data. And it's really interesting to see how it lines up with the geography. Um northwest quadrant, uh preferred scenario C. Nor southwest for B, uh southeast preferred C and northeast preferred A, so. There's probably some inferences that we can draw from there, um you know, based on what is available in their quadrant now. Um and what sort of change they'd like to see or not see. Um I think this scenario is kind of play on that a little bit. But uh as as you can see, generally, there's not, um there there's quite a bit of even spread still. You know, I think scenario B was definitely not favorable in the northwest quadrant because people don't want downtown creeping over into the west. Um in that area, they like the open spaces, you know. Scenario A, the northeast is favorable because, well, downtown is in their quadrant, so they'd like to see it improve. But uh we'll we'll have to tease some of that apart, you know, as we we move forward and. But uh, you know, I hear some more quotes. You know, someone from northwest, I like that I live far enough west that I can drive five minutes and be in the city, but it's not in my. My backyard essentially, you know. Southwest, you know, I I'd like to see more design redesign of downtown and less sprawl. I don't want that coming into my neighborhood. The scenario A would focus on the heart of the downtown area. There's been so much focus on West K'sville, it's time to bring some. The focus to Main Street and more life and activity there, so. And this one here, I think that everyone likes to feel they have easy access to some amenities, so. You know, this individual feels like uh maybe their neighborhood is could could use more than it has. They like the idea of, you know, spreading that through the city and providing amenity to everybody, so. We also asked the question accompanying the scenarios, you know, is looking at future development in K'sville, what objectives are most important to you? And preserving single-family neighborhoods and maintaining community sense of place was common through all quadrants, through all the responses. Is the top priorities for uh future development. Uh but once we got to the third, wh- when we looked at the quadrants, when we got to the third most important uh priority, it started to differ. And um. So we saw in the northwest, uh preserving open space rose higher in the northeast, affordable housing was higher. And the two south quadrants, it was about limiting or reducing traffic impacts. So um I think there's some some stories told there with uh with those uh are. You know, Lyle shared with us that uh you know, the northeast issue is is kind of funny one. Because I guess there's been some actual pushback from folks in that area on affordable housing in the past. But it seems to be a prevalent theme, uh whether it's for against, I suppose. Uh we also threw in a question about accessory dwelling units, uh and people were very divided on this. Most of the comments were were very, you know, very far ends of the spectrum of absolutely not, or I've already got somebody lined up. So but uh when it all averaged out, it was slightly in favor, so. That's definitely a a discussion to be had going forward. I think some of the concerns surrounding it are, you know, people are concerned about parking. They don't want to see, you know, a whole bunch of cars filling the street because everyone's got people living in their backyards. That that's something that we've seen in other communities uh that we've talked about with ADUs. Uh in in the area, um is usually a concern around the parking and the uh the tenants, so. Uh there may be some other issues, but. We also had some open-ended questions towards the end of the questionnaire uh that. You know, was there anything we missed here that is important to be considering? Um these bold ones at the top uh were those that, you know, multiple comments highlighted on these topics. Whereas the ones below that were just single comments pretty much. Um so, you know, need for better planning, design, architecture in K'sville, uh desire for beautification and city. Um there seem to be, you know, some equal sentiment as to um, you know, absolutely no more high-density multifamily. Versus it's okay to have some multifamily in our neighborhood, in our city, but not not in the single-family neighborhoods, you know. Those are kind of the two themes that came out in regards to multifamily housing. Um there was some discussion over the ADUs and, you know, work-live type situations. Um and there was quite a few comments expressing, you know, inadequate parking downtown, uh incomplete sidewalk systems and trail systems. Um just the desire to, you know, provide more of that and and make the systems complete. I think people are concerned, you know, in these growing neighborhoods about the traffic and. How, you know, it used to just be walk down the rural road and you didn't see any many cars, but now there's quite a few cars on those roads and there's no sidewalks, so it's. So that that was the scenario questionnaire results. Um and then we had the guiding principles. I- image uh exercise. And basically what we did with this, this the the goal for this was to basically translate translate digitally. What we would do in an in-person public workshop where everyone receives a green dot and a red dot, and they put it on the image that. Best and worst represents the principle to them. This was uh kind of tricky to put together digitally, but I think we still were able to tease out. You know, the right. Sort of themes that I I think they they correlate with the other data. And gives a pretty clear picture. So with land use principles, um you know, preserving the small-town feeling here. Uh you know, at the upper end, you know, if people love your your single-family and your historic neighborhoods. They're not interested in seeing these multi-story mixed-use buildings um come to town or the daybreak type developments. Um there's a lot about the historic charm uh in the walk in the small neighborhood feelings that is, you know, really important to folks. Looking at the downtown, um you can see which three images were most liked. The greenery.
I have to comment real quick.
Yeah, go ahead.
Like the fact that you have LaConte Stewart's house in that last one.
I I I think we didn't even know who lived there.
Oh, it's in the it's in the National Historic Register of Places. He's a art artist. And it's in the it's it's registered National Historic Place Register, and it's in K'sville. He's a he's a famous Utah artist.
Okay. I yeah, I didn't know.
It's it's the middle one on the right-hand side.
Uh huh, right, the this one here.
Yep.
Yep. Oh, that's funny. Yeah, we we just went out and uh just took photos around the neighborhood, so. Um this is just one that we snuck in. I and I don't know how many people in town know that. Maybe that's why it rose to the top. For the downtown ones. You know, there may have been some, we we had some discussion yesterday with our advisory committee. You know, as to why some of these images may have risen. Um greenery and images has a tendency to. Be favorable with people's psychology. Um so that may be why we're seeing, you know, these two are are outweighing the. The holiday development, you know, the holiday downtown development is. Uh does have the right form, you know, that's similar to the downtown area you have now. But perhaps because it's so new and it's it's lacking some of that historic charm, it's not old. Um it's lacking trees, it's it, you know, that's why this image actually ranked number four, so it was desirable, but not as. And once again, you know, big multi-story stuff, absolutely not infill, it's multi-story, it wasn't wasn't favorable either, so. Um and we see that again and again through these. But uh, you know, in this one, you know, a ninth and ninth sort of um. In Salt Lake, that that sort of place has a lot of pull, but also in, you know, your more traditional development, getting away from these. Standard strip malls that are associated with a grocery store or something. Getting something that's a little got a little more form and architecture to it is definitely something that um. You know, that correlates with the comments we've seen. And then this was kind of a tricky one, and I think this one could have been better clarified, but. You know, adding bike lane capacity. Um isn't is an important one. Roundabouts, and these are all surrounding traffic issues, parking downtown. Um sees these all correlate with things that we've heard. Um and once again, the things that are less desirable, the multi-story, multifamily housing. You know, the busy road and trying to share it with a bike, that's that's not um favorable with folks, so. Looking at housing, uh it's been interesting to see these ones. It seems that uh there's. You know, some favorability, it's not necessarily the density is bad. Um it seems that people actually okay with it if it's done in the right style, so. Once again, multi-story and modern architecture, not so much, but we see some of the more traditional architecture. Um something that feels single-family or town home. It's done right. Then it it it's uh it's okay. Um but once again, it's kind of gonna come down to geography, where is that located? So. Uh then in the ADU, you know, you can see it's split second, second best and second worst, so. Um there's discussion there as to whether that's appropriate or not. Looking at the the life cycle uh principle. Um you know, we see a lot of the same. From the last with, you know, what was favorable or not. Um this one was interesting, you know, the the large uh home, single-family home, you know, uh. For some people, it it it's a part of that, but others it's not, you know, and uh. I'm not sure if that's because people really, you know, caught under the life cycle, life cycle needs, you know, or thinking about affordable housing. And we're thinking about, you know, um you know, both the young and the old, is that a model for them, you know, perhaps not. But maybe some of these others are, you know, um so. Uh this one related to open space, and you can see the ones that really were the most green, most manicured, less least wild-looking. Uh ranked the best. Whereas some of these others did a little bit more wild and maybe un- unmaintained open space didn't do as well. Um we also sampled the parks uh recreation trails piece, and and we'll be diving into this um more. Uh as we do more uh with the parks element uh next year, early next year. Um but this was just very early sampling to get a sense of what people are prioritizing. You know, it seems that, you know, a lot of your traditional elements of parks are favorable. But what's more telling is what people are against. I think it's the dogs. It's the, the large sports fields. There's a mixed review on splash pads, but. With recreation, there seems to be a big pull for a pool in Kaysville. We saw that with the first public scoping exercise as well. And a lot of interest in pickleball as well. But not so much with the gym. People feel, you know, you've already got Vasa Fitness there. Why replicate that? Cities need to be doing that. So. And then with the biking, it's, you know, the separated beautiful, beautified trails are what's. You know, most attractive. Lyle unfortunately wasn't the, the, the top photo there on the DRG, but. But I think this, this image did rank well as also, but you know, what we're seeing is that the, you know, the sharing. Road, the share is not, not favorable. The more urban bikeway, not as favorable. And the mountain bike trails. So, so people are really interested in what the, what the DRG offers, I think. They'd like to see more of that and also, you know, connecting to open space where it can and. Beautiful areas. Finally, the transportation principles. We took a different spin on this question type with this one and asked people to do the top three. Just because there are kind of a broad variety of options to choose from with these. With this first one with the main corridors, it's really about creating walkability. Separating the blocking and biking, creating plazas and public spaces, making these places where you can actually, that you can experience outside of your car. That. It seems to be a, an issue and, and I know from us biking around on those busy roads, it's kind of terrifying. Getting around 200 north on a bike. So that's no surprise there. And then, you know, once again, trail corridors prioritized, walkable neighborhood streets. And that safety element of being across the road and feel safe about it. So those are priorities that we're seeing commented on again and again. And then finally, as far as your regional and community mobility. You know, a lot of people have commented or expressed ideas that. You're a bedroom community. And so. The freeway is, is the automobile is a key part of your town. How people are going to get to work. Transit is not, is viable in a lot of people's minds or bike shares or things like that. They see them as fun. It would be fun to have a bike share to, you know, bike downtown with my family. But from a, from a commuter perspective. You know, people are really looking at I-15 or possibly the front runner. But beyond that, that's, that's how they'd like to. Get around basically. So. So, yeah. That's what we came away with. From this, this process. Moving forward, as we spoke with our committee yesterday. You know, the first question that needs to be answered is, you know, is this? A good set of data that we can work with moving forward? Is it enough? If so, you know, how can we take, how do we arrive at the preferred, preferred alternative going forward? And if it's not, then what, and what steps do we take? Will suggested bringing this information to you all. The hopes that. You know, maybe between this commission and also the work of the advisory committee that we could arrive at a prefer alternative. Which we can then take back to the public. For their comment and review rather than trying to seek more feedback on the same scenarios. In hopes of getting, you know, a few dozen more responses. Got to cover that pretty well, Lyle. Sort of the takeaway from our meeting yesterday.
Yeah, I think so. And I, I don't know where to maybe start the conversation on. Maybe to supplement it up. What are your, your comments initially as a commission? Do you have any questions? At tonight for probably Sam in particular on what they think about the data that he hasn't already explained. And then that might help us dive into, okay, what, what do we do next? And so. Maybe a question time would be a good place to start. What are your thoughts about what you've seen?
My first thought is. It comes to mind because I think. Just thinking about, and also the, the whole fiber issue where people just did not want more bonds to. Do whatever. I'm wondering, have you ever, and this goes back to. To you guys, have you ever done a, I guess, like a study or in this situation where you said, okay, these are the scenarios? That you can choose from. And oh, by the way, after you click it, here's usually the, I don't know, the average cost it takes to implement something like a protected bike lane. And I'm curious. Then when they find out the cost, because somebody's got to pay for it, what the reaction is.
Yeah. So that can be done. We could certainly, you know, take it to that level. I think though. We end up scaring the pants off people.
The only reason I say that is had I not witnessed this fiber. Initiative. And if you look at. You know, supposedly what the comments are, not the Facebook scientific, but it is what it is. Again, it's, it's, it is the cost and what's going to take to. Get this to this scenario. Is it another bond? What is it? So I think it is, yes, it may scare people off. Having said that, it's, we're going to have to eventually deal with it unless I'm. You know, I mean, are my police commissioners, I mean, tell me if I'm maybe taking too much into it or.
So. So what I, I'd say is, you know, the, the general plan. Is, you know, intended to be a visioning document. And, you know, similarly, I'll, I'll use this as a case example. We recently did a Parks and Rec master plan for another community. In the state and they asked for a pretty detailed cost estimate. Of, you know, their park system at build out in 30 years. And they're a community that's on track to triple their population over the next 30 years. So that's a lot of amenity they need to add. And so the totals for that were coming out to, you know, something 80 million dollars or something like that. And, you know, everyone's been disflourished by that number. But, you know, the, as we've explained to them, it's, this isn't that you're bonding to build all this today. Right? This is a 30 year plan. And. A significant chunk of this bill that we put together is going to be done by private investors. You know, it's going to be done, handled through, you know, they're, they're exercising. You know, master development agreements where most of this parkland is going to come under their umbrella. Via developers. So. When we, when we put it in that framework, it's like, oh, okay. It's not quite as bad of a butcher's bill as it looks like. But when we, so similarly with this, this effort, I think, you know, we, we could. Take an approach like that, but it's hard to help people to see. This is a 30 year process probably that we're looking at to, to achieve any of these scenarios. And the really, the goal of this document is to, to provide vision and not necessarily prescribe. Very specific, detailed plans that have a dollar sign to them. I think that's where, you know, the general plan starts to maybe get to. Out of its league if we start going that route, that route.
Juan, to answer your question a little more specifically, when you do a general plan. It's general to guide how your zoning goes, where you want your amenities, where you want your, where you want your general. Type of zoning to go. There are costs involved. But typically in a community, those costs are sometimes born when you're bringing in development from impact fees and other things. So I think, I don't know if Commissioner Sumner will answer some of this, but that, when I worked in another community, that was, some of these questions came up and. I think some of the answers are, are borne out. It is a general guiding document. It's a vision of where you want to be. As a community, because you don't want to put all your industrial. Next to your residential. You don't want to put all certain things in other parts of your city. You, you want to keep things separated. You want to keep industrial one part. I mean, that, that. That's what this is doing is it's telling you how your community would develop out and where our community is going to start into redevelopment. And because we're developed, we only have 300 acres left to develop. We need to be looking towards that as a community, how we want to maintain what we have as that goes forward.
So what, I, I agree with you, but I guess when I'm looking at, for example, the protected bicycle lane, I love that idea. I ride my bicycle a lot. And yeah, there, there are times where. Certain areas, yeah, you, it's not as bad as some of the things going on as living there, but. Again, there, there's a cost associated with that, right? And who's going to pay that cost? Is it a developer? I mean, if we're talking about throughout the city, then. Isn't it the cost borne by? Most of us, like you said, we only have 300 acres of development left. So I guess that's what I'm getting at. And yes, there are certain things that were on. That list of preferences redevelopment. Yes, I could see where. Acne development comes in. Yeah, they're going to be paying for that. I, I get it, but. You know, like the sidewalk, like I said, the protected bicycle lane, which I love. I mean, I, I think that most of that's going, the cost is borne by. Us, right?
Or. Oh, and I think that's a level of detail that you probably get to a little bit later in the process. That's probably beyond what we want to be really focusing on at this point. I think. The, as part of the discussion that we had yesterday with the, the advisory committee. Is that, you know, when you look at the, what we got, we, we went out with this information, hoping to get a lot of feedback from the public. And I'll tell you, with every plan I've ever been involved with, you always feel like you wanted more. Feedback from the public than what you got. It, you always want to have more. It's kind of low. Compared to what we got in our first round of public, public feedback. And there's probably a lot of different reasons for that, but it's, you know. The question really now is, is do we, do we try to move forward with what we've got? And, you know, we could go back out and try to get some additional feedback from the public. And there's probably not. Anything wrong with trying to do that a little bit between now, say now and the end of the holidays, because we're not going to do much between now and say the first of the year. And maybe we try to get some additional feedback, but I don't think we're going to get that much more than what we've got at this point. Unless we really embark on some kind of a major effort. And so the question becomes, you know, and that's why I suggested to the advisory committee that we. We come back to the planning commission because really under the state code, the planning commission is the body that's charged with the responsibility of preparing the document. And making the recommendation to the elected officials. And then ultimately the elected officials decide what to do with it, but, but the planning commission's got that initial responsibility. And we've gotten some feedback now from the public and I think between. Again, like I said, I don't think we're going to do anything between now and the first of the year. I think it would be maybe a good idea if we had a work session. With us, just, you know, maybe us. Probably we're like right after the first of the year and try to sort through. What we've heard and what we've seen and what we know of. And, and, you know, maybe we take a little bit of the initiative between now and then and go out and try to talk to more people. And see and get some specific feedback, but then we get together and we kind of hash through this. As, as you look at what we got. From what. Sam just presented. It's a little bit all over the map. You know, you don't see, there's a few kind of clear trends, but a lot of it's. Here and there and everywhere. And it kind of depends on where you are in the community as to the direction. And so that's, that's probably something at this point, we need to maybe take the bull by the horns and say, okay, well, let's. Let's maybe say this would be the preferred scenario. The, the ultimate, whatever we wind up saying, let's go this direction. And our consultants prepare a document or a plan that would kind of emphasize those things. We're going to take that out to the public again and get feedback from them. And hopefully we'll get some better feedback, but that's, that's kind of where we're at, I think. And. You know, my suggestion yesterday and again tonight is that. Let's take what we got. And get together in a work session and hammer this out. And with the feedback that we have and maybe try to get a little bit more between now and then.
Well, I would agree with you on that. Having done this in Morgan County. Three years ago, four years ago. It's what we did and, and we got a pretty good product up there. I think going, going and doing a work session is the right thing because I think we have a lot of data. We need to narrow it down.
Maybe just to comment, Will, if I'm, I'm not necessarily opposed with moving forward with the data that we have. I guess the only concern I have is with the limited data is what conclusions we can draw from it. I think that is the concern. I mean, coming from my, my background is I do this every day. I'm, I analyze data on a daily basis. That's my profession. And if you look at like, it'd be interesting to have the raw data. Because if we look at these rankings that they've given, that doesn't tell us what proportion of people that selected each of those. And I, I would be really asking is, is there any statistical difference between the ranks? I mean, there might be only differences between very ends and everything in the middle is essentially a tie. And so I think it's, I, that's what I'd be interested in because if it's essentially a tie for a lot of those things that we're putting rankings on for the things we've seen. Then I think it's really hard to draw any conclusions from that.
No, I agree with you. And I think that's, they're going to share the raw data with us. And, you know, tonight, we're obviously not going to talk about this in any detail because we haven't had a chance to look this over and really kind of think about this. But the discussion we're having tonight, we get the raw data. We get the opportunity to look that over a little bit. And then I would also encourage us all to go out and talk to our friends and neighbors. In the community and, you know, get some more feel for this. And then like maybe right after the first of the year, we schedule a work session. Let's not do it in our regular meeting. Let's have a, you know, a special meeting. Where we get together, kind of like what we did with our meeting with the council. And that, and that, that's, that's what we talked about. We just talked about this. And come to some conclusions about. Maybe where we go with the plan and give some instructions to our consultants and the staff to move forward, to draft something up for us.
I, I agree with, let's keep on moving forward. And I agree with, if anybody knows statistics, obviously it's Toby. I always defer to Toby about that. I'm curious. And maybe Toby, you can answer this at a later date. You know, what is? What am I asking? How many respondents do we need to have to get us? And correct me if I'm wording this incorrectly, but. Do we need, you know, what's the data set amount that we need for an actual somewhat?
Juan. I, I'm in the middle of the process for a public, for a public input right now. And they usually say you want between, you want 3% of any given population, then you can start extrapolation from there. And so out of a population of 30,000, you want 3%. So that's, and then you can start doing some, some rough guesstimation from there.
Okay.
But I'll tell you that.
But the bigger the sample set, you're going to have a better.
Lucky to get that percentage. You're not going to get it.
Yeah, I, yeah, I know. It's. It, it's interesting. I'm trying to figure out how do we, I'm really disappointed with that low amount. But then I, I realized that. Look at our meetings. Most of the time when we get the most participation is when it's. Deals with something in somebody's backyard that. People are very opinionated about. So how do we? I don't know. Again, I'm just thinking about how do we get people, and just like when you said, Will, yeah. I can walk around. So all of us, what, seven of us? Let's say we talk to 50 people, you know. Does that move the needle? You know, again, it goes back to Sam with. Or whoever's purview it goes under in getting. This out and getting more, you know, at least getting 3%.
Well, 3%, 3% of the city is, is about 900, 900 to 1,000 citizens.
Right. Right.
Well, when you look, we had what, the, as Sam indicated, we had over six hundred people that came on the website, but only eighty and then sixty filled out the surveys.
Right.
And I think, because when you look at our first go around, we had a much higher rate than that, but we did, this one was all pretty much online only. The previous round, we were actually, you know, encouraging people, we were at city events. And uh, a lot of stuff, trying to encourage people to to get uh, involved.
This is the new norm though.
Yeah, that's right.
Exactly. With without the public engagement piece, we're seeing lower numbers. I mean, for the general, for the consolidated plan I'm doing for C D B G right now, I've got, we've put it out forty five days ago, and I've got four hundred and six responses as of today.
Wow.
So in a county, of a county five hundred thou, or a county five hundred thousand people, I'm not even going to breach my, the number I need to do extrapolation.
But I, I, and I made this comment to Lyle, um, partway through the process, when I went onto the website and took a look at it and um, and then um, went to the surveys and started to kind of see what people needed to do, I, I honestly found myself saying, this is kind of confusing. And I wonder, because, you know, we had six hundred people that came and took a look, but ten percent or so only filled the stuff out. I'm wondering if we had a lot of people that were like, I don't know what what to do here. I don't know what I would really say or do, so that may have been part of it.
I think it goes back to, again, when it when you think that it's going to affect your neighborhood, you you're going to participate more, and this is, I don't think there's any doubt about that. So and I remember taking the survey and thinking, oh, this is, you know, this is nice, this is cute, but nothing jumped out at me. Um, that said, okay, the reason we're doing this is because it's going to affect your neighborhood. I guess more what's the word I'm looking for? Maybe Sam can uh, fill this in. Um, more of in your face where it tells you it would behoove you to take the survey, because, you know, if you don't, then you come back and complain. Somebody's going to say, hey, you had your chance. Uh, I mean, obviously.
Yeah, and that never works. You know, it, people don't, they show up when you have the rezone meeting. They don't show up.
Exactly. So so how do we translate that into the survey and get out there? Um, so going back to uh, what Steve just said, obviously post COVID. Um, we've had to make some changes. We can't do these quote unquote public events, but maybe we just put these um, I guess, displays at Bowman Smith's and leave them there permanently, maybe to, right? I mean, to get more, I mean, everybody's got to go grocery shopping.
That's, yeah.
I mean, yes, I do, you know, use the pickup and delivery service or something, but I still like to go in there, so I think, at least for me.
I have a, so I have a question, just to clarify for, I think for everybody. May maybe Sam can answer this probably, uh, or or Lyle, but I think Sam. So will you just tell all of us what uh, public outreach efforts have we made thus far? What, what does they, what do they look like? What are all the things we've done to try to get input? Let's start with that question.
And is there a budget? I'm just curious for landmark design to actually do that.
Okay, um, sorry, I, first I need to ask Lyle, is there anyone in a waiting room, Lyle? Because Mark Vlasic has been trying to talk.
Poor Mark.
He apparently has his hand raised, um, but I have, can't see him in my attendees list, so I don't know what's going on.
I just see another landmark design popped in. That must be him. You should have permission to speak, Mark, if that's you.
Great. Do you hear me?
Yes.
Ah. Watching this whole thing from the beginning almost, so. But I did want to uh, put a little bit of input there about the question about, you know, the the participation and uh, and you're right with the this all being online here, the numbers weren't what we wanted, but we shouldn't get a public, this was a sort of a replacement for a public meeting. And at a typical public meeting, you know, a good one is where we get a couple of hundred people. A bad one is where we get ten. And so the, when you start talking about three percent, and we're really talking about statistically valid surveys there. And that wasn't what we were trying to achieve here. We're, this is sort of a replacement for a public meeting. And so the numbers that we have here are sort of in the middle range of what we would get in a sort of um, a typical public meeting. Uh, and so I would say that we're never on these, it's, you're right, it's who participates gets accounted for in this, in this particular process, and that's why we try to get layers of of input such as reaching out with focus groups to talk to people that maybe we think are not uh, being heard or that don't typically participate. And so that we're, we never really, we do plans that, the plan that Sam mentioned, the the parks and rec planning that we do, yet very typically will do a statistically valid survey with them, because the questions are very focused and less visionary. And so I just wanted to say that I think we should keep it in that perspective of what this, this particular workshop was meant to do was sort of, if we were to do it non-COVID, it would have been held one night or two nights, probably at City Hall and somewhere else, and we would get a some, a lot of people attending and we would do, you know, roll up our sleeves together and talk and but this, this was sort of the, the, the alternative and
Well, then, do we actually take the wrong initial approach? Like you said, this wasn't a survey. Should we have actually done that? And going back to what
We, we could.
What I'm asking is, what outreach has been done then? So that's, that's it, right? From what you're telling us?
Well, we, we, we do it in phases, and the first outreach, which was mentioned, was the scoping meeting, and that's where we got much more participation and and we've gotten more, but there was just this sliding off here, and who knows? I mean, it could be that people are over meeting, it could be um, you know, just fatigue with one more Zoom meeting. You know, we, we don't know, and it, it's certainly a shortcoming of being limited to online formats. Uh, but the reason that we didn't do a statistically valid survey was really a budgetary consideration. You know, they come at a cost of ten to twenty thousand dollars typically.
So I'll, I'll add a comment, I guess at this stage, um, what, no matter, I guess, no matter what we've done so far, um, it's that, and I think landmarks done uh, as best they can, given the circumstances. I don't think this is a landmark issue as much as it is a question about what the city or what the planning commission wants to suggest or propose with respect to additional input. Uh, I don't think, first of all, that we are up against any deadline. Certainly, we want to do this sooner than later, because we keep it on the every five-year track or whatever, but COVID, it, if, if, if we have any reason to delay it, it's this year. And delay it for the sake of getting a better product, it's this year. And so if we think we want to get more input, and I agree with Will, we're never going to get as much as we want. That's a fact, but we can get more, and i- if, if we can find, if there are other more effective ways that we haven't implemented yet, I think we should try to implement those things. I mean, in in my opinion, um, and maybe it's because we're on the planning commission or I'm on the planning commission and I'm biased, but in my opinion, planning in any endeavor, but certainly in in the cities, from the city's perspective, planning a general plan is near the top of priorities if we're going to spend our money. Uh, how do we want to envision our community? And uh, we know that we can spend money and get the word out about things in in Kaysville. Let's, if we're going to have to spend an additional amount of money to get a better input, that's a pretty good uh, use, in my opinion, of of taxpayer dollars. And uh, i- if it needs more, I would suggest we do that. Uh, if we can do it within the budget we've already allocated, that's even better. Uh, but, y- you know, if it takes some sort of a direct mailer to every household, let's do that. If it takes putting things up in uh, stores, let's do that. Let's take another few months and get more, knowing we're not going to get enough, but we can get more if we can. I think we should try to do that.
Yeah, I mean, if, in the spirit of uh, how we do things, I would almost say, yeah, I'd like to make a motion, A, to make sure what Toby had said, we get more uh, data, um, and B, let's figure out how we go about getting the word out. Because like I said, when I saw the email, of course, it'll be on the planning commission, I know how important it is, but when I look at it, I look at the email and I look at what's been, you know, whether it's uh, the Kaysville Facebook page or whatever, it just doesn't come across as ah, this is not important, you know, whereas like, when the the junk mail that I see, oh my gosh, it's like, if I don't open this, I'm going to go to jail. It's the IRS. You know, it isn't. So that's my point is, let's do, you know, let, let, let's, I don't know. I'm just, yeah, I'm just so disappointed i- in the, the amount of feedback and yeah, and like I said, it's a, I, let's do a survey. Because this is, like I said, when I look at it, you know, and I, I had my wife look at it, it's like, eh, okay, maybe. But I think if, like I said, if I saw it, that, oh, wow, it's going to affect my neighborhood, oh my gosh. That means more traffic? Oh, yeah, I'm going to do it. So.
And yeah, the big problem that I see with with it, and a survey is a good idea, but at the level that we're working at, and when you look at the survey that was online, if we were, say, like to send a mailer to everybody's house that had that in there, it would take a substantial amount of time for somebody to go to do that. Because you've got to understand what you're doing and then take the time to make the choices. And honestly, a lot of people won't do that.
Yep.
They just won't do that. And so that's why that kind of stuff looks better when you have them in a public meeting, because then you can ask them right there in the meeting. You can explain it to them and then get their feedback right there. The problem is, again, with a public meeting, is getting people out in normal times, and right now, we're not having public meetings. So
Yeah, even if you did a public meeting, there are going to be people that, rightfully so, don't want to go because of COVID. So as far as the medium, how we get it out there, I'm indifferent. It's the best medium, and right now, it is online. Uh, so we're talking about semantics right now. We're saying, oh, this is a survey, this is a this, this is a that. It's a survey. The only difference is that it didn't get enough responses. So it, what's been done has been done. What can we do to, moving forward to get more? It is, you know, again, and I totally agree with Toby, this is when, when I just saw the numbers, holy crap, excuse my French. I, I, I would rather delay and get a good amount of information. Um, it's just like, you know, Josh, what you've said uh, in the past is that part of our job is to, you know, when we look at a request, okay, let's take a look at what it is now, and also to, the questions that we come up with, let's try to foresee what's going to happen in the future based on what we've seen in the past. It's the same thing here. Um, so.
I, you know, and I, I don't disagree with you with what you're all talking about, especially what Josh is saying and what most, almost all of you seem to be saying, which is, let's get more.
Yep.
I just look at the, the circumstances that we're in right now, and I think it's going to be really hard to get a lot more. Um, because if we send mailers, a lot of people won't fill them out, because it's going to be pretty complex. If we, we, we can't have public meetings, um, you know, because of COVID, that's just not an option for us. Um, I don't know. I just don't see in the, in the next little while, seeing the ability to get much additional feedback.
So there is one possibility here that just came to my mind that, and this is a, something to consider for um, Lyle in particular, but Lyle, as you know, we've been asked to put together additional scope to dive into parks and rec a little deeper. And we haven't heard whether or not that is going to happen or not. But if it were to happen, we are doing a statistically valid survey for that. We could possibly do a combined statistically valid survey. Uh, it may, may require a tiny bit of cost sharing. But that, you know, that, the group that we work with, we work with Y two Analytics, and they do utmost polling in Utah. And they, we've done, you know, probably seven, eight, nine of these with them now. Uh, they are able to get it out and get feedback a lot faster than the old sta- statistical surveys where we have to mail it out and then get it back and then handwrite in everything. It'd take months and so I'm just suggesting if time is, if we could slow it down just a little bit, and if we feel like that that's worthwhile, we may want to pursue talking to um, your Parks Department to see if they would be willing to somehow share that survey with us. Then we don't have to find another twen- fifteen thousand dollars.
So what does Y two Analytics do that is different from what you guys just did?
Uh, it's, by being statistically valid, they get the three, four percent participation. They, they can guarantee a um, a margin of error of less than five percent. So what we just did is a, not a statistic, it was never set up as being statistically valid. We don't have a control mech- mechanism, and we don't have an ability to dive into populations that are underrepresented. And that's what they do. And and so uh, and they've already put a proposal together for the Parks Rec, and that's included in our proposal over, or big proposal for the Parks and Rec component. And so there would be a possibility that, you know, we could, instead of doing forty questions all related to Parks and Rec, that we could see if we could split it fifty fifty, and we're doing one right now that's similar to that for, who's just mentioned in Morgan. We're redoing the Morgan City, Morgan County Plan, Master Plan right now, and that one's just getting, right now, getting ready to be sent out. So it's, it's something that we do a lot of, it's just, again, that that it's usually a determinant of it is that whether we have a budget amount that allows that to come in as a a piece or not, because it takes up such a large portion of our, our typical budgets.
I've said, this is so important, cost should not be the issuer, correctly, Josh, if I'm paraphrasing you wrong, so I I almost feel like it's unfair to Parks that we take away some of the questions. I think we all agree, we need more information, we need more data. Uh, I mean, do we, I mean, I, I I agree that, yeah, if we, just like what Chair said, if we need to spend more money, we do it, but let's get a good product to per, to present to the uh, to the city council.
Well, and, and I think if we're going to talk about spending more money, I mean, that's great for us to talk about, but we've got to get the council to agree to that.
Okay.
And um, Shane was on here a little while, but he dropped off. He probably dropped off because he heard we were talking about money.
I will, maybe, maybe not right now, but at some point here in a second, I will stand on my soapbox and to, to, and speak to anyone in the council who's listening about the uh, propriety of spending this money. So anyway, but if someone was going to make other comments.
Jared, Jared, I'd like to make a comment. I, I think this is more than essential. I think it's crucial that we get good statistically accurate data, or we are wasting our time. Because this is the future of Kaysville, and you don't want to have data that's not accurate on where uh, uh, the general populace wants to take it. And I think if we don't get it, we have totally wasted our time up to this point.
Agreed.
If I could, I want to make a motion.
I'm going to make a motion. May I? Or is anybody else wants to speak?
Well, Mark, were you going to say something?
One thing, that really interesting thing, if we were to go with a and I, I don't want to, you know, I'll, I'll go on the limb here, Lyle. I don't know if this is even in your realm to slow it down or whatever, but uh, if we were to do a statistically valid survey at this stage, that's very atypical. And it's kind of exciting, because normally we do it at the beginning to get the pulse of the community. What this one would be focused on is, these are, these are what, these are the ideas we've come up, this is what we've heard, how do you feel about it? So it's really, and that's, that's, we, to be honest, we've never done one at this stage. So it's really, and that's that's, yeah, to be honest, we've never done one at this stage.
Yeah, and I think that's why I say. This is gonna get complicated because I think. In order to get people's opinion on something like that, they have to read through the material you're gonna send them. And we'll see, I mean. It, you know, this is like an educated vote, some people will probably vote without reading through the material and others probably won't even read through it or respond because there's so much to go through, so.
Again, why do we need to send out material through snail mail, why can't we just have the same? Again, I call it survey, because that's what I thought it was. Uh why could we not do that?
Last last, when we did it last, we got six hundred people, which isn't bad, but it's certainly not. The entire population of Kaysville, you know, really.
Right.
Getting it and looking at it.
And what Mark's saying is if we go with Y two analytics, they're gonna guarantee that we get that three percent. Right, Mark, is that correct?
Yeah, we'd have to talk to them again about doing something like this where they're looking at alternatives rather than. Just questions about that they can infer from. So I I would have to talk to them, but um they would, whatever they would get, that would be. Um scientifically valid.
Uh yeah, I think at this point we get really granular, like I said, I. Yeah, if there's nothing else, I'd like to make a motion, you know, in the spirit of what we've been talking about.
Um, well, let's. Let's see if there's anything else uh that that needed to be presented or discussed and then we can move into. Making making emotions, Lyle, is is this kind of where we're at?
Yeah, so what I probably would just look for at this point, um. It's not an official agenda item, but I think emotions appropriate if we have kind of a general consensus of the planning commission's thought, I think I sense that. Already that we want more data. Um, so we can go forward with staff, uh you know, I. We have some members of the council on the steering committee and I or advisor committee. And my. Pulse from them is, um they probably would support what the commission's talking about. So we can get the details on that and work through that with landmark design in the council and and discuss. The cost of that and, you know, I don't think that should be an issue for the commission too much, they'll just know that that's your interest, is what I'm hearing. Um, I don't know if this is a tonight question that we're able to answer. Are we asking the right questions, maybe based on? What you've seen before, obviously, you want more more responses to understand where people stand on it. What questions go on to this um data, so are we? We want to do that with the preferred scenario, we create something and then do a statistically uh valid analysis of that. Do we keep these same questions on these alternatives? Do we still discuss alternatives and have some modifications? I think that's. Uh maybe my next question, I think it's very clear that there's interest in uh maybe the additional. And more valid statistical survey. Uh what do you want to ask the public, are you happy with the questions that were asked? Based on the results that you got, even on the small sampling.
Toby?
I was just gonna say, I I think it was interesting, the three scenarios that were posed and, you know, the responses there. I think what would be interesting is just to have that be a statistical survey, like which of those three ser- uh scenarios does a person prefer? And also help them understand what the pros and cons of each of those. Um and the cost maybe also with each of the scenarios. I think that would be the the interesting results, it could just be like a one question survey, literally. Um but they would have to be informed on, you know, why, how they're making that decision.
Yeah, I think you'd have to give a lot of information about what those scenarios are, so people have an understanding of what they're choosing. But I agree with you, I think, you know, maybe focusing it on that one. Kind of one issue, which is which which of these scenarios do you prefer?
So it sounds like I'll I'll discuss with landmark and they'll work with us in Y two K, how do we? Bring these scenario questions uh before the the city, again, through a statistically valid process.
Also, I mean, does it make sense to involve? Toby, at this point, I mean, he is a stat expert. I feel comfortable.
Well, I think if you use Y two analytics, they've got some pretty heavy duty people there.
On Terry, Toby.
So let me just, I guess, make some comments and then maybe we'll move into uh. A motion or or whatever, if Quan or someone wanna make one, so, I mean, I wanna follow up with something that Will said, because. I think it's it's unquestioned that that this is our, this is our wheelhouse, this is our role here. And not only does it, you know, that's by state law, like Will said, uh. Um, but the way I envision our role is. Not that we come in and answer all the questions, right, that that we say what's best, the the, you know, the handful of us. What our role is, I think, is to find out what the community wants and then and then we can. Add our expertise and fine tune it if we if we feel it's necessary, but. Our role is to shepherd the process and get the community's input, and I think we. Uh just maybe by the nature of this year with covid and whatnot, we haven't been able to get what we had hoped. Knowing that that's always gonna be somewhat the case, but we can get a little better, and so. Uh this is my my uh appeal to anyone on the council who's now listening or will actually more likely be listening, hopefully. At some point in the future to this. Um thi- this, i- if I can be cliche for a minute, this is, you know, to use uh seven habits quadrants. This is quadrant two, not urgent, very important stuff. If we're gonna spend our money uh as a city taxpayer dollars, this is, as I already said. Right near the top of of spending taxpayer dollars, we we provide, you know. Fire, safety, police, uh uh uh. Sort of infrastructure, maybe fostering community or whatever, and we. Uh use money to to plan and create an environment where all of those things are successful, this is where. It is very um worthy to spend additional money if that's needed, it may, it sounds like we may not even need additional money, but. If there is additional money needed, um. I think we should come up with it or find it somewhere and put it more, put put the money towards this if 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 it's needed, and I think. What we're really talking about is we can accomplish anything in this endeavor with more money. I mean, we gotta be reasonable, but if we just went, if we blew the lid off and spent millions of dollars, we could get a response from every person in Kaysville if we wanted to. I'm I'm not advocating for that, but. The point is, we can spend additional money and get more voices, and I think we need to do that.
Uh I know we were gonna move on, but I just wanted to say, I agree, um I think that having data. Is crucial for driving decisions, I mean, there are very few. Uh. Areas in any expertise at this point in the world where you can get away with. With doing something without having data to back it up and especially. Uh you know, people looking back on this are gonna say, where did this even come from and and we would, I think, want to have that to to back us up, I mean, I don't know if we even have. Obviously, it'll be city council that'll be approving it, but I do think that if we. Um can, we should try for, just for more information.
It could, cuz I think about that combined meeting that we had where uh the coun- council member asked, where are you guys getting this? Guiding principle and we said the surveys. That's it, you know, it's, we we need that, um some kind of baseline document, well, general plan, but. You know, it's gotta be. It's gotta be, it's where I'm looking for more scientific that we can, you know, because I I could see the comeback, well, how many people uh? You know, participated, oh, uh sixty eight people, oh, great, so you didn't. Bother to go back and try to get more, so, you know, I'm trying to stay ahead of all these. Pushbacks, I I think we're all agreeing to the same thing, so.
Yep, I think with that clear direction, I haven't heard anyone really proposed to the contrary, so whether you want that in a formal motion or not. Um, we we can go forward with that. And just as soon as I have additional information, uh having worked with landmark and the council and then, you know, I. My guess is there's support in some fashion to do that and we'll get creative and find a way, whether. Well, to do something more, it sounds like it's very certain that we'll find a way to do that and. And.
Make a uh motion and please, please help me out, so I make a motion. And we go back to the city council or to this uh steering committee. Get more data, uh help me out here, guys. So ta- statistically credible data.
I think what you wanna ask for is you wanna ask for funding to assist the planning commission with finding. With increasing the available quality data to for input into the general plan. To assist us with uh coming up with credible or with a better formula for future planning.
And if and if I could add something on there, I think Will makes a lot of good points that. Uh, you know, if we're gonna make these efforts, we better make them effective, we the last thing we wanna do is do this and and not get anything. Uh so my suggestion, I guess, footnote on to that would be to that motion would be. Go maybe, maybe let the committee brainstorm. Effective measures that have not been taken so far. To get this information and landmark can can guide that process.
And I'll and I'll friendly, funnily add on to that, is I think we. Take landmark suggestion of potentially using a firm like they suggested, their analytic firm of. Using that to gather more input.
Hey, Heather, you getting all this?
So. Yeah, can we, can we call that your motion, Quan?
Uh, yes. What everybody said. Yes.
I second it.
Okay. Uh, let's, let's, I think we can do this all together, those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Let me just explain, I'm I'm fully in favor of this, the initial suggestion that I made for us to take this and just go with it was kind of under the assumption that. We weren't gonna have much more resource to do much.
Right.
What we had at this point, but I absolutely, the more data we can get, the better.
Yeah.
No, I I I told, yeah, I totally understood what you were getting at, Will, and you know, in a sense, I was kinda kinda getting antsy and I didn't know what our options were, but. I'm glad that the chair said, yeah, let's go ask him, let's go back and ask more.
See what the council says.
So a quick question, uh who is on the steering committee again, just refresh my memory?
Yeah, so we have um mayor, a couple of members from the city council. Uh city manager, we have representation from a couple of businesses, some residents in town, a couple of members of our planning commission. Um, we have representation, part of the the funding from this comes from. Uh grant monies from the Wasatch Front Regional Council. And so staff from their planning entity is part of that as well. And then the consultant groups landmark and their team uh participate in that. That's a little broad without specific names, but we're probably at about fifteen or so.
Minimums on checking and savings accounts banking with.
Um, okay, so. I just wanna make sure we didn't leave any un- loose ends on this agenda item. Uh, okay, let's, let's move then, if we have anything left on uh correspondence or count, maybe calendar, Lyle.
Yeah, just very brief, uh happy holiday to everyone, so it's gonna be a while before we convene again, we've previously discussed Christmas Eve. I'm not sure why, but nobody wanted to be at a commission meeting. Uh so that's been canceled, so we'll be meeting again on the fourteenth of January, I believe. So everything we discussed tonight, um you know, we're not gonna wait a month to make a decision on that, so watch your emails, I'll try and keep you. In the loop on uh how that's shaking out and and what we find out about that and.
I I think we need to put a planning um uh planning session in January as per Commissioner Wood Summercorn. Separate from the commission for a regular planning commission meeting to go over this. Do we wanna do it in February?
Well, let's see where we where we get with what we're gonna do for getting additional data, I think, you know, we do it after we get the additional data.
I'll be open to, we'll let you know where we're at and what the maybe input is from landmark and the. If we get the Y two analytics or similar group, help us. Um whether you wanna help finance questions or you wanna see the data after, uh we'll just keep you posted and certainly I'm open to. Um we'll notice a public meeting, I just need twenty four hours and we can find time to meet together, if that's what you'd like to do, we'll. See where the process shakes out as to when you prefer to meet.
But our next official meeting would be January fourteenth, if we skip the twenty fourth then?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, um if that's it, Lyle, then. Anyone want to uh move to adjourn?
It's all moved.
All right. Thanks, everybody. And thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good one, guys.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.